March eighth, twenty twenty-two, North Liberty City Council meeting.
Harrington?
Here.
Sittig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the approval of the agenda. To my knowledge, there are no changes to it. Second, have a motion. The agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is consent agenda. Does anybody have anything on there that they want to pull out and discuss separately? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five is opportunity for public comment. Now is an opportunity for anyone to address the council on any item that's not on our agenda. All right, couple of things. Oops, my mic's not down. If you could please state your name and address for us. And we, it's been a while since we've had public comment, so I'll just remind everyone that this is an opportunity for public comment. It's not something that our council can take any action on tonight, and it's not actually a conversation with council. So you are welcome to let us know what's on your mind. And if it becomes repetitive in any way, then I'll just ask for us to close the public comment time period. But with that, go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Hi, my name is Manny Galvez. I live here in North Liberty, Union Precourt, two sixty-five. For several years at this point. And I'm here just to talk about my understanding, like, just another residence, we have been sending like emails to put in consideration. The school, the workers fund, like, is here in Johnson County. And at this point, the county allocates some money to support, like, people, like, they were seeing, know we design an opportunity in the county. So on checks, for sure you know about that in the news. And I am here just to, like, ask you and to request you, like, you have money, like, we can, like, do the same here in the city. I think, like, Johnson County, Iowa City, they have been working and trying to figure out how that could be possible. And I think in our city, as, I mean, it's not, it's not something like, it's good to say, but in our city also, many people, many residents, they had the same situations. That maybe they had the same privileges, like you have, like I have, to be working from home. But many residents in North Liberty also, they suffer more than everybody. We are requesting this support. We understand, like, everybody was facing difficulties, but we need to understand, like, some residents, they, in this case, they face more difficulties than everybody. And I think, like, as always I said in public, I think it's an opportunity, like, we have. When we talk about a new foundation in this nation, we cannot leave anybody behind. This is something, like, is so strong in our culture in this country. And I think, like, we can give one example, just not to Johnson County, but to Iowa and to the rest of the country. That this pandemic times affect everybody. But we cannot move forward, forgetting the people, like I was in the first line. Sometimes these workers, these immigrants, these people, like, for whatever reason, they don't have some, like, a proof sometimes for income. It's not just immigrants, just not Latinos, but workers. And they don't have this opportunity, for whatever reason, they don't receive federal support. Again, like, maybe, and thank you, like, maybe you receive and I receive. We can do something for them. And show a message of just no solidarity, just no mercy, but justice and social justice. And thank you. Just that.
Thank you, Manny.
Thanks, Manny.
Any other public comment? Seeing done, I'll close the public comment period. Item six is city engineer report. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some project updates for you. I'll start with the Dubuque Street Phase One project. We had the pre-construction meeting with the contractor last week. That meeting went fine. They showed us their preliminary schedule. Looks, looks pretty good. They showed getting done well before the deadline, but they didn't factor in any rain days. So, but we did like to see the preliminary schedule looking good. Private utility work is continuing out there. What you're seeing is Mid-American Energy, do some gas relocations, and then I believe MediaCom showed up today to start the Communications Underground Alliance already done with their work, and South Slope and the other companies had been done for a while. So it looks like that's good, and they'll be out of the way, ready for the contractor to start. Currently planned for March twenty-eighth, which is their late start date. So it'll probably be around that timeframe. We also met with Iowa City Schools, Penn Elementary on Friday, and with Reds on Friday. There are a couple of the local businesses that we really want, and, and school district, we really want to touch base right after we knew the schedule from the contractor. We had met with them previously, but wanted to do that again. And then we have, Nick has two Zoom meetings scheduled for Friday of this week to allow the other immediately adjacent property owners to listen in on the, the schedule and upcoming work. We had already met with them before, but we want to do it again right before construction starts again. And next is Rancho House renovation. So that's an oldie. That one's not closed out yet, but you should see that on the consent agenda next meeting for the final payout. They had a lot of warranty items and closeout documents that took them quite a while to finally get submitted, but that looks like that's going to finally close out. And then the only other project update I have for you tonight is Jones Boulevard Extension. We submitted the hundred percent final review plan set to city staff, and we've been coordinating with the utility companies. We had another meeting today with them. And they look pretty good. Maric, Lynn County REC said that they can get the overhead power to underground done in April. As long as we get the easements back from the developer in time. Those have been submitted to the developer. And then the schedule on this project is to issue the bid documents March twenty-fifth, public hearing April twelfth, bid opening April nineteenth. And then, like I mentioned, the, the overhead underground work should occur in April, and then the roadway construction should start sometime in May. And that's all I have tonight, unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions for Kevin?
So Kevin, thanks for meeting with the school and surrounding. Obviously, a big safety concern there is that starts with Frog Hollow, with the school. Safety crossings for kids, all of those types of things. And I'm sure you and Pentecost will be all over that when they start breaking ground and doing that. If we need to have, you know, staff out there the first few weeks, just checking on things of flow.
Right, yeah.
We do that and just work through the issues that inevitably will come.
And the schools, facilities group, a member of their staff attended. He said what they'll probably do is have one of their staff out there the first week or two, just to help guide people, make sure they know where they're supposed to be going. So that will help, help too. We've got a pretty good partnership with the school district. They're pretty helpful.
And then signage for businesses, again, back to last meeting, getting feedback from businesses out on nine sixty-five. Just something to maybe keep, keep in mind, and especially as we go along, be flexible. So if we're hearing some issues or complaints from some of the businesses of, you know, if there's additional things that we can do, we certainly want to help them out.
Yeah, we'll be having our weekly meetings, construction meetings, so we'll probably be walking around and talking to people, like, after those meetings to give them more frequent updates also.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin. Item seven, the city administrative report. Ryan.
Thanks. Just two quick hitters for you this evening. First is a reminder that our goal-setting session is coming up on Wednesday, March twenty-third. We had our staff session last week, and that was very good, I thought, and had a lot of good discussion there, and you'll see the results of that discussion at your March twenty-third meeting. And then lastly, as you probably read in the paper today, the Steiner Certificate of Need permit was approved yesterday. We did, the city, I submitted a letter of support and spoke in favor of that project in front of that, in front of that commission. And it was much shorter than the, the last CON board meeting, but it, and it did end favorably with a unanimous vote to approve that project. We look forward to that.
Thank you. Any questions for Ryan?
Mayor, I do have one, and sorry, Ryan, I normally don't do this to you.
That's all right.
I normally email, but driving around late this afternoon, the corner nine sixty-five and Zeller, Rancho Way and Zeller, with the Casey's and the car wash, pretty big eyesore now. Do we know what may be happening with that?
It's a good, good question. You're not the only one that's asked that question. We have actually reached out to Casey's about their plans. They have to do some, have to do some monitoring on that site because the gas, because the tanks have been in the ground so long. And so our plan is to push them a little bit harder to get rid of that building. I don't know that they will, but they'll certainly, we also talked internally about property maintenance codes and what our expectations are there. So we'll be having some future discussions about that. We have reached out to Casey's to make them aware of our, our concern.
I don't know if you could see it, but I was smiling right at him when you were asking that question.
That's that question.
Yeah, I think that's the question I asked him January first. Thank you for bringing that to the public. Any other questions? Okay. Move on to item eight, which is the mayor's report. I'm going to start off with a fantastic proclamation. We get emails about these things every once in a while, and some of them are funded wrestling one, being one of them, but this is, this is pretty cool as well. So we, whereas, I guess it's a proclamation for honeybee day. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food we eat. Honeybees are vital in production of over ninety crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. Honeybees contribute to a healthy Iowa environment by assuring the availability of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and flowers for wildlife and all Iowans. And whereas forty-five thousand or more honeybee hives produce about four million pounds of honey valued at over eight million dollars, and honeybees provide an estimated ninety-two million economic value to Iowa's crops from their pollination. And whereas Iowa has over four thousand five hundred beekeepers representing hobbyists, side-liners as part-time small businesses, and full-time commercial beekeepers. Beekeepers have as few as one to two hives in a single apiary to a hundred apiaries with thousands of hives of individual commercial operations. And whereas traditionally beekeeping occurred in rural areas of Iowa, now beehives increasingly are in urban areas with rising interest of hobby beekeepers that keep honeybees in Iowa cities and towns. And whereas the state of Iowa has an active apiary program that protects honeybees and beekeepers by inspecting for apiary diseases and pests, as well as actively encouraging best keep, best beekeeping practices by outreach to individuals and beekeeping groups. And whereas honeybees face serious threats from invasive pests and disease, decreasing bee-friendly habitat, variable climate, and pesticide and herbicide pressure. Therefore, we, the city of North Liberty, do hereby proclaim March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as Honeybee Day. And as part of this, Ed St. John with the Honey Producers Association is here to accept this proclamation on their behalf. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
You want to say a few words? You're welcome to. No pressure.
First of all, I'd thank council and mayor for participating with Honeybee Day. Actually, Governor Reynolds was in, has designated Honeybee Day as March thirtieth, as you have, and she signed the proclamation today. You're joining Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Coroville, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Montezuma, and those are the ones I know offhand, as cooperating and participating with Honeybee Day. Honeybees are insect pollinator, insect pollinators. Habitat is very important. Raising the significance of honeybees and insect pollinators to the public is, is crucial to our food supply. About a third of our food is supplied by, needs pollination. And bees are defensive, not aggressive, like wasp and hornets. There's a difference. And education to the public is very important. You may not know this, but ninety-plus percent of all honeybee hives in the United States are on semi-trucks. They go, Iowa sends bees out to California. California needs about two million hives in, in January, February, to pollinate the almond fields, just for almonds, so that people can have their almond milk, et cetera. Then they move up to Washington for apples, down, up, down to Florida, through Texas, up the East Coast, and they're all over the country, pollinating food because there aren't enough insect pollinators today, because of the way we do agriculture and other things. Actually, in China, certain parts of China, we have an interstate system, which helps the mobility of all these insect pollinators of, of honeybees. In China, they don't have that yet. There are certain areas of China where people get on step ladders, use paintbrushes, and pollinate from flower to flower on trees. So we're lucky that government, you know, local, state, city, federal, have, have done a great transportation system for the U.S. So basically, I just want to thank you for raising the public concern of insect pollinators, honeybees, and, and cooperating, participating with Honeybee Day as March thirtieth.
Awesome. Thanks for the work you're doing, Ed.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any D questions?
Thank you.
I don't. Thank you again, Ed. Just a couple of other items here. Last Friday, the Iowa City was formerly the Chamber. Now they host a monthly coffee connection here in North Liberty. And this one on Friday, the first Friday, was kind of special, and that is over at Spodix. It had been delayed for a couple of months for weather, the pandemic. But Spodix is a recipient of supported funds here from the city, and to see how much they've used those funds in growing their staff was, was pretty awesome. So thanks to Spodix for hosting us. A couple of things I wanted to, to bring up. We all would have gotten an email about a home of historical context last week, and I had a chance to meet with Russ last week while Big Cat was away here and, and figure out how we can solve for this. So we had some good, he had mostly his ideas. I was there to cheer him on. But I think there are some things that we'd like to do as a city in, in forming some historical preservation group or committee here. So more to come on that, a lot more, and a lot more community help in that way as well. So be on the lookout for that. The last lighter note is that you may all know that next Tuesday is our special election, and if you haven't done so yet, you can vote early down at the Johnson County Auditor's Office in Iowa City. Please take a moment to go down there and do that. We have three excellent candidates running, and I want to thank them for, for doing so. The election is next Tuesday, and you can vote everybody at the rec center from, I believe, seven AM until eight PM that day. So please take a moment to do so if you haven't done so already. Lastly, I just wanted to publicly thank our law enforcement and our fire departments for their efforts last week. It was a pretty tough week in our community, and I wanted to thank you all as law enforcement and firefighters for what you did and continue to do to support our community. More importantly, I wanted to thank, and I wanted to reach out and make sure, take, take a moment to recognize how much that we need to support each other in this community. Mental illness is oftentimes very silent, and I'm grateful for those that are in our community that took the time to share their experiences. It helps us to understand more about each other, especially those that are living with mental illness. It is okay to not be okay. So if you are struggling, know someone that is struggling, please talk to a friend, talk to a coworker, talk to a family member. We can all be here to help each other. With that, that's all I have. Counselors, do you have anything that you participated in this past couple of weeks beneficial to the city? You got a big thing next, two weeks from now, don't you? Yeah, she does. She starts her time on the CVB board for us. Thank you for that. Brian, you haven't met as a group, I don't believe, for urgency management. Okay. Brian, Eric, anything?
I, I attended the Affordable Housing Coalition Community Meeting on, on February twenty-fifth, and I just wanted to bring up, it was mainly a discussion about mobile homes and, and large corporations buying mobile homes. But I wanted to, to make everyone aware that there's a documentary that's going to be shown at Film Scene. It's called A Decent Home. It features some folks from our community, and it's being shown on April twenty-eighth at seven PM at Film Scene. I think it's at the Chauncey. Urge everyone to attend.
Thanks for bringing that up. I failed to put that in my, in my comments here. And as Eric said, it's the first Friday of every month when this meets via Zoom. It's very easy to do over lunch. If you can do that, jump in. Really informative. All right. Item ten is the Stiltner Site Plan Amendment, and item A is Staff and Commission Recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a nine thousand square foot building on the Stiltner Electric site. It'd be a standalone building, but on a vacant portion of the property. Also related infrastructure such as parking and stormwater. You see the, the stormwater management facilities agreement on the agenda as well, but, but pretty straightforward building. It matches the other buildings, so Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. The applicants here, representative, if you have any questions.
Any questions for us, but by all means, you're next. Come on up. Applicant presentation.
My name is Kevin Kuhn. I'm here on BAFTA Client. I work for MMS Consultants. Ryan hit on pretty much everything that I had on the site. The only other things we're doing are expanding out the detention basin so that it better accommodates the site and surrounding sites. Are there any questions regarding the site?
This is to support growth of the business?
Yeah. It's just additional room for Stiltner Electric.
It's great to see. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thanks, Kevin. Item C is Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution approving the amended development site plan for Lot Two, re-subdivision of Lot Ten, I three eighty Industrial Park, North Liberty, Iowa. Can I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Appreciate the expansion and staying in North Liberty. Good to see.
Ditto that. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D is Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash twenty, a resolution approving the stormwater management facilities maintenance and easement between the city of North Liberty and TSS Investments LLC that establishes the terms and conditions under which stormwater management facilities will be maintained for the Stiltner Electric development in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Can I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Well, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about the stormwater management? All right, Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eleven is the Annual Budget and Capital Improvements Plan FY twenty twenty-three, and item A is the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Annual Budget for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three. Does anyone have any comments in regards to our annual budget and capital improvement plan? No one's making a break for the microphone, so I'll close public hearing. Item B is Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, a resolution adopting the annual budget and capital improvements plan for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I please have a motion for resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any comments or questions?
Just, want to just again thank the staff for, I mean, this is a lot of work, so we really appreciate that, and really spelling things out and making it easier and easier every year to see what we're doing with people's, the taxpayers' bunnies and what they're getting for their dollar.
Thought it was interesting to note, too, that a lot of what's in there is required of you. It's not that you're just doing this for fun. So these are requirements that the state has put on cities for that. You had a comment or a question, right?
They are requirements, but it is also fun.
Oh, all right. Well, that's good.
What I would offer, if you take a look at page sixty-six of the PDF, at, at our last meeting, you approved the maximum levy resolution, which excluded the debt service tax levy that's done by design. That's a requirement of law. Page sixty-six actually identifies our entire tax levy, our full tax levy for the year, which is eleven thirty-two, thirty-one point nine two, whatever, but round up to eleven thirty-two. And so that is kind of a snapshot of the tax levy. And then the revenues and expenses in a much shorter format than what we usually look at, which we, we put in the model just for a little easier review. So I just wanted to point that out and appreciate your comments, Brian, and just would would state that we have a, a, a management team that has been doing this for a long time, and, and they are really good at, at presenting a budget. So I appreciate all those folks that are involved.
Anything else on this one, you guys?
I just wanted to mention that I, I did ask Ryan late this afternoon by email to, to provide some information about the, the direct assistance program that, that Johnson County is putting together. Just because of the emails we've gotten, I just want to, it's not in this budget, obviously, but I just wanted to make clear that, that I'm at least interested in looking at the information about that for future allocations of ARPA funds, possibly. I also want to say that I'm, I'm very much in favor of, of just about everything in this budget. I'm not in favor of using ARPA funds for social services that we would normally, the, the support for Social Services Agency that we would normally do on an annual basis. And as a result, I'm going to vote no on the, on this budget.
Thank you, Eric. Anything else? All right. Tracy, can I have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Nay.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twelve is the Solomon Holdings LLC Zoning Map Amendment. Item twelve A is Staff and Planning Commission Recommendation. Item 12A is Staff and Planning Commission Recommendations.
Okay, so this is a large hole in the city for quite a while. Finally had somebody step up and was able to annex it into the city, which we appreciate. I just want to leave the zoning map up there for a second and kind of look at this property as kind of what I would refer to as an island. You've got industrial zoning, industrial and commercial zoning to the west, industrial zoning and commercial zoning to the east, industrial zoning to the south. You do have some residential to the north. But just to give you an idea, when you start talking about where are places for higher density in the city, that's part of where city staff is coming from with respect to this development. Here's two pictures of the same picture, but one to the right is how it would be oriented on the property. You have the RS9, which is a residence district to the north. The light green color there at the northeast will remain undeveloped at this point in time. Developer didn't really have a pending development at that point in time. And heard some feedback from the neighbors about, because there is some residential to the north on the north side of 240th, about the potential there. So we just kept that out and we'll bring it back when there's a user for that development. The purple in the middle is the RM21. That would be the multifamily development. And the red, of course, is the commercial front inch along Penn. And there would be a street between the multifamily and commercial district. Jones Boulevard, as Kevin mentioned, would be along the east side of the development. Future land use generally coincides with the request. It's residential and commercial. So it's nice to have a development that is consistent with comprehensive plan and not a large industrial development. We did have a good neighbor meeting on January 27th. It was fairly well attended. I think most people just had just questions and wanted to hear about what the development proposal was. We haven't received any formal objections. We did receive, I did receive an email of concern. We will have an eight-foot wide multi-use trail on the west side of the Jones Boulevard. There was an avid cyclist who had some concerns about the number of access points on Jones Boulevard. That's, obviously that's a challenge because you do need access to the property. I will say as a staff, what we generally try and do is not have anybody with a direct driveway access to a street like this, being a collector and just having drives and streets going there. And the development proposal has that. Again, another look at what the proposed zoning is a little more blown up. This is the concept we have for the multifamily development. I'll let Mr. Pratt speak a little bit more into it. But this is the Emery and Altuna. It's a little bit higher end of a multifamily. Obviously, it's a large development, something that, largest multifamily development we've seen in the city. And some of the amenities like a clubhouse and pool and a pier and walking trails and things like that. I will mention that we are still working through the site plan. In this case, it's preliminary site plan. And the nice part about changing the code is we didn't require a fully engineered site plan, which would have cost a lot of money just to kind of get through the process. So they're able to pare that down a little bit, give us the detail that we need. So the preliminary plat for the overall subdivision and the site plan for the multifamily is anticipated to go to planning commission on April the 5th. And then it's planned for this to all come together to the city council at third reading. So you essentially know what you're approving at that third reading and that's something staff did push for. And this is the concept. It's hard to read up here because it's a 2D plan, but this is the little more recent addition of how the multifamily would lay out. And it's, again, it's a large development. It's something that's going to have to be phased over time because this is a lot of units to build. And then the concepts we saw were about 420, 20 units. And with the new code update, we actually provided what you should consider when approving a zoning map amendment. And those are consistency with the comprehensive plan. We've talked about that. Compatibility with zoning in nearby properties. Staff doesn't see an issue there because we've got that other industrial, commercial land around it. And I think placing the single family to the north was well-placed to be a little bit more compatible with the residential properties that are on the north side of 240th. Compatibility of established neighborhood character, extent to which the proposed amendment promotes public health, safety and welfare of the city, suitability of the property for which it's currently zoned and the extent to which the proposed amendment creates non-conformity. So Planning Commission considered this unanimously recommended approval. There were two conditions that the preliminary plat and the site plan for the multifamily come together at final reading. It looks like that's on course. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Russ. Any questions for Ryan, while he's up there? Okay. You're off the hook. Item B is the applicant presentation. Now's the time to fill in the cracks if Russ left anything off of there, Brandon.
Thank you, staff and council. Appreciate you listening to what I have to say. Brandon Pratt, City of North Liberty. I live just outside of the city limits and local entrepreneur and developer. And wondering if Ryan's available for hire because he did a pretty good job at.
No.
Nah, move on. No, he did a great job. Just a couple of things that I would just add to the presentation that he did. Maybe a little focus on the residential. RS9 zoning is what we've applied for and think it fits a need, something that we can bring to the City of North Liberty that the City of North Liberty hasn't seen yet. A little bit of smaller side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks to try to ultimately drive and bring quality, affordable homes to North Liberty. I think everyone here knows that a starter home, new construction in the City of North Liberty starts at about 450 and most of them are above 500,000. And our goal with this project is to bring a quality product that we haven't seen that is also affordable for the citizens of North Liberty. So excited about that product. The RM21, he mentioned the Emery, which is in Altuna. I did not develop that project, but the developer and the builder who was involved in that would be a partner in this project. And just brings really high quality, affordable, living community. So some of the things that we're going to do that's different, it's not, we're not going to just build a 24plex with no amenities. We're going to have a pool, fitness facility. We do things inside of the clubhouse like free coffee and tanning for our residents. We have a dog wash area, pet wash area. Hopefully, we'll be able to put plans for a pet park in for our residents. Some playground equipment, a pier that'll go out into the pond. We'll do kayak rentals, things that we can, we're really trying to create an environment where people can live, play, walk, eat to some of the great amenities like Tin Roost. But that's really, and then obviously, but in all seriousness, be able to hook up to our bike trail and get throughout the city to be able to shop and stay here. So just a really high-quality, first-class development. And definitely think there's a need. Some of the feedback that I've heard from other individuals, it's a lot of units and it clearly is. But there's no doubt the City of North Liberty is growing and affordable housing is something that we need. And the higher density and the higher zoning, the RM21 zoning is going to allow us to get the units that we need to do to be able to keep the overhead as low as possible and pass it along to the tenants. So with that, certainly open to any questions anybody has.
Fire away, council.
Outlet one in the RS9. What is that? Is that going to be green space or?
Yeah. Unfortunately, with the way it laid out, we don't like to create a lot as a developer. That's wasted sellable square footage. But ultimately, we're going to turn it into an amenity, have it be green space for the people that live around it, yes.
And you're quite the history buff, I see. Whoever was naming the streets.
Any other questions?
I appreciate what you're trying to do. I know, I think I heard you say at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that you're looking at a price point probably around 300,000 or the low 300,000s. I wouldn't call that affordable, but like I said, I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't disagree with what you're saying. Affordable for today's world is difficult. It is.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Pratt, just again, you know, quality product coming out of, you know, a local born and raised individual. I just couldn't be any more pleased with your desire and will to want to make this a better place. And you've lived here your whole life, longer than I have. And I see the love and the passion that you're pouring into our community and I appreciate it.
Thank you. That means a great deal. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you.
Item C is the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Zoning Map Amendment. Now is an opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed zoning changes that we need to make or would like to make for this. Any other, any public comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing.
Well, I think we have, I think we've solved them.
Not a constituent, but I'm here speaking on behalf of it. So I don't know if you want me during that time or after.
I didn't follow what you were hearing.
My name's Susan Villeta. I work with Johnson County Public Health.
Okay.
And I'm the individual that's worked with the Scouts troop and presented to the council, the Parks Commission. Sorry. What?
Oh, on the next item.
I thought you said 13.
You just got to practice run at it, Susan. It's all right. You had me. I was listening to what you had to say, so. All right. We'll come back, we'll come back to you. How's that sound? Okay. Should we close the public hearing then? Is that okay? All right. All right. Seriously. Item, item D then is the First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2022-07 and ordinance amending Chapter 167 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located on the north side of West Penn Street, west of North Jones Boulevard, as extended northerly from West Penn Street to 240th Street, located in North Liberty, Iowa, to those set forth in the Minnesota Code for the RS9 Single Unit Residence District, RM21 Multi, Multiple Unit Residence District, and C2A Highway Commercial District. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Again, we are simply doing a rezoning on this item. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item 13. All right, she's paying attention. Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Amendment Regarding Smoking in Parks and on Trails. Now is an opportunity, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now is an opportunity for the public to make comments regarding our ordinance amendment. Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Item B is the First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2022-06 and ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances to prohibit smoking in parks and trails. Could I have a, let me clarify here that this ordinance, as it's written right now, does have the changes in it. And what's written here, I will cover those changes that Ryan had sent out in the amendment today. So no amendments need to be made to what we are about to do. Possibly. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions? All right. Susan, the floor is yours again, if you'd like to come back up.
I've done this so many times, I can't even tell you and I have not done that yet. So that's a first. I also had a student throw something at me for the first time in the classroom. They insisted it was their class member throwing at another class member. And it was like from here to here, so I believe that. I can't remember what school it was in. Anyway, so I've had a couple of firsts this year. I mean, COVID, right? I'm going to blame it on that. I work in public health, right? I'm just here to answer any questions. Really, that's it. After all of that.
That's it? Does.
Got all the information.
Does anybody have a question for Susan, since she came all this way?
No, I would say thank you for pushing this though.
Thank you.
Same here. I think we'll all echo that.
The Scouts troop did an awesome job. I think, was Steve back there? Okay. None of the Scouts showed up, but Steve is here representing tonight, right? Yes. They did a wonderful job talking to your Parks Commission. So I hope that they told you all that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Tracy, can I have a roll call, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Vintage Estates PAD Amendment. Item A is Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2022-05 and ordinance amending the Vintage Estates RS4 PAD Single Unit Residence Planned Area Development by reducing the rear yard setback from 35, or from 30 feet, excuse me, to 25 feet adjacent to the north and west property line on property located on the west side of South Jones Boulevard, west of Western Terminus of Corey Court, located in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this consideration, please?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions on the second reading? Hearing none. Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is a consideration of waiving the requirements to have an ordinance read on three separate dates. Grant, do we need to have any type of action on this item?
Yeah, you need a motion to suspend your rules, which would require a supermajority, which in this case is still just three of you. That'll change here in a couple of weeks, I suppose, once we have a fifth member, which would then require four of you, two-thirds.
So it's a motion to suspend the rules?
And waive further readings.
Okay.
For this one only, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. So just to recap on this one, this is only going to apply to those two units that I think are left to be constructed. So they're units one and units 11. The others won't be applicable because they've already started there. So I guess we just look for a motion? Oh, you need to tell me something else.
I don't want to be out of order, but I just wanted to clarify that while what you said is correct, that it's likely to only affect two units. If one of those units along the north or west border of this property were damaged or deconstructed or they wanted to, if they wanted to expand them, right? The setback reduction applies to all the units that border the north side and the west side as it's written right now. It's not just unit 11 and 20, if I'm remembering correctly. But I feel like I said this last time. I'm so sorry. But I don't mean to repeat myself. Please want to clarify.
It's all right. Thanks for covering me up.
My name's Heather Rapp. I'm with the developer on this project. And you are correct, it is only on unit one on the north and unit 11 on the west that we're talking about.
Thanks. So.
So normally, we don't waive the third, second, third reading or condense them all at all. Except the only time we ever really that I can remember doing that was like a public safety thing. Or just in the case of this, when we can get somebody's house started a little bit earlier. So I will move that we suspend the rules so that we can do the third reading of this.
We would waive the third reading.
Yeah.
We would, well, you still, the same practical effect.
But yes, you would condense the readings into one session.
I seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any other opinions on the matter?
I'm not in favor, but I think there's a reason we have three readings normally and I don't see a reason to change that today.
Yeah, I would agree with Eric. In normal times, this is probably not something that's going to have any other pushback or comments and would pass easily in the third consideration here. This just allows them to get started a little bit earlier.
I understand what the reason for it.
So it's okay. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sittig?
Nay.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C then is Third Consideration. I get to read the whole thing over again in one meeting, guys. An adoption of ordinance number 2022-05 and ordinance amending the Vintage Estates RS4 PAD Single Unit Residence Planned Area Development by reducing the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 25 feet adjacent to the north and west property line on a property located on the west side of South Jones Boulevard, west of Western Terminus of Corey Court, located in North Liberty, Iowa. Just seen a motion for this third consideration, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments or discussion? All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. And barely on the second page of our agenda, old business. Anything on here for you guys? An old business category. All right, new business?
Can I just say that today is International Women's Day? And so we just want to thank all the amazing women who have did anything to contribute to the lives and well-being of everyone. And just the labor and work that has gone into that. I mean, the list is phenomenal. And I think we all can look within our own families, our own lives, and our own reach and think of several women who have impacted us personally and our community. So thank you to all the women and those who identify as women today.
Thanks for your attention. Four of us should have spoken up earlier on that one, by the way.
That's why somebody has to keep us in line. So just, I wanted to direct people's attention to the website when they have the time. There's a lot of projects coming up in North Liberty, and so there's a project website. You can go and sign up so you can participate in watching the meetings for that. And also the City Slate, which is a fun activity throughout the course of summer, has their page, so you can kind of keep track of what's going on. One of which, not quite so fun, is my favorite event of the year, which is the Muddy Creek Cleanup, which is going to be April 9th. Sometimes it's the Muddy Creek Polar Plunge, depending on how agile I am. So hopefully, it'll be better. But just check the website out because there's a lot of cool stuff coming up.
Thanks for that, Brian. Anything else, counselors? All right, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Remember, guys, it's okay to not be okay.